The lot where Chick-fil-A is and what they will have is three lots when we get finished. Five lots, I'm sorry, five lots when we get finished.
This is the whole area, it goes all the way up to the former NARTI, whatever that is now.
Right, right, that's not part of this. And the streets have already been built and as you know, Chick-fil-A is open, the crossing. We do have a large-scale development plan for part of this property, but it needs to be split into individual tracks. And that's what this is.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve the ordinance. Any other comment or questions? Anyone?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores? Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton? That is not here, Lawson? Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next item is the final plat for Cadence Crossing subdivision. Planning commission reviewed this. Final plat recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "The ordinance accepting the final plat of Cadence Crossing Subdivision in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
What's the change? What's the change here?
There's not a change, it's just a the picture, the two pictures is to give you a closer view of what the subdivision itself looks like. These are all-
This is as forwarded from the-
Right.
Yeah.
If you go out there, all the street improvements were in. Water and sewer is at the established point for us to move forward with the final plat.
I think we've seen this before though, right?
Yes.
This is a final plat. I mean, all of these things you've seen before because we're down to the final plat stages in that the improvements are installed. All of the requirements have been met. We have all the documents in place. It's ready to be signed so that it can be filed as a final plat. You can start selling lots and getting bill of permits. That's where we are. And the dedication of the right-of-way and easements and all that stuff cannot be done until the final plat is accepted by the city. And it's accepted by ordinance and that's what you have tonight.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Other questions? Anyone? Katie Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Second.
Flores? Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next one is the final plat for Rosedale Heights. Again, this final plat was reviewed by the planning commission and is recommended for approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "The ordinance accepting the final plat of Rosedale Heights subdivision in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency." Now you'll note that that lot on the corner is not part of this subdivision. It's a separate track. So it's the ones that's being accessed by the drive on the south end and they all run onto Don Tyson Parkway, but they don't have, none of the houses or none of the structures will have driveway access to Don Tyson Parkway. All of those will be accessed from the rear.
And that's all been paved and everything already, correct?
You don't see them until they get to that point.
Right.
I'll make a motion that ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions? Anyone? Katie Denise?
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Second. Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next item is the final plat for Hilton Road subdivision Phase 2. Planning commission reviewed this. Final plat recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads, "The ordinance accepting the final plat of Phase 2 of Hilton Place subdivision in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right Denise?
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0. The next item is an appeal of a denial of a variance request for Patton Industrial Park. Steve Patton in your packet, you've got a letter from him detailing why he is appealing. There is a typo in his letter. It says it went to planning commission on August the 5th. It was actually July the 5th. And I believe the minutes from the meeting and all the diagrams are in the packet as well. I believe the vote at planning commission was five against, two in favor and one abstention.
I was, I was at the meeting. Just cut to the chase, I think the building, there was a building built and it encroached into the design of the drainage structure. The detention. And I mean, it's there and I don't, I don't remember all the reasoning behind it. Would you like to speak to that? Yeah, yeah. Give them some background a little bit.
Mr. Patton had an approved large-scale development plan for buildings to be built on this site. There was a concrete pad that was shown on the original large scale, didn't have a building on it. A building was built on that concrete pad without a permit. When code enforcement found that, that's how we came forward with it. And we determined that it encroaches on the required 20-foot easement around the top of that detention pond. He was asked to come in and apply for a variance request. The planning commission denied that variance request. I mean, the building was built without a permit. Had we gone through the process of amending his large scale and had it in there, we could have caught this on the front end and asked for the easement to be vacated, a portion of it or something else, but that didn't happen. It was done without a permit on the front end. And so that's where we are, where we are today.
So the building is built partially on an existing pad and it was connected with a new pad. There was two existing pads up there, is that correct?
I don't remember exactly, and Mr. Patton will have to address how much of that pad was there when we started. There was a piece of concrete that's shown on the large scale and you can see that on there, but there wasn't a building on it at the time.
And?
And a pad being in that easement doesn't create the same kind of a situation that a building does.
Was the, was the detention area dug after, after that pad was already established?
I, I believe so. Now, you'll have to address that or engineering or building inspection will have to because I, I don't know. It was shown as just a concrete pad on the large scale that was approved.
Mr. Patton, you want to address it?
Okay, so the pad was already there. Been there since probably the 50s. The, we built this building under the assumption that because there was a pad there and some miscommunication between me and Randy, the contractor, we built the building without pulling the permit. We have since taken the building down. But the pad was there when the large scale was approved for construction. The pad encroaches into the right-of-way of the 28,000 square foot detention pond that you play football on by nine feet. Now, from a pure engineering standpoint, okay, fine, if there's real trouble with an engineering issue, that should have been a nine to nothing vote. But it wasn't. It was a no. You built that building without a building permit. That's why it got voted down. Now, the engineering department recommended that we file for a variance. And we did. And Katie got up there and said, "We recommended it" and they still voted it down.
Yeah. But the building's gone, you-
Building's gone. I took it down.
Okay, so-
When did that happen?
Pardon me?
When did that happen?
When did we take the building down? When was that? Three weeks ago? Yeah, it was a couple of days after the meeting.
So are you just asking not to have to pull up the pad? Is that?
No, I want, I want the variance because I'm going to buy myself a building permit and put my building back up.
Okay, okay, okay.
So you took it down because?
Well, there had been a, Randy had done a design that got around the problem of that encroachment into that right-of-way. There, there was no problem. But the, the planning commission voted five to two or whatever it was, voted it down.
Well, again, my question is, was that detention area built after that pad was there?
Yes. I don't know, Randy addressed that.
My name's Randy Ritchie and I built the, he has three buildings on his site that were part of the original large scale. And I didn't, I'm a licensed engineer, I do large scales and all that. But I didn't do that one. I got involved after the plans were already done and Steve already had all the building permits in place for those buildings. So I showed up as contractor only on that job, built the buildings that he already had permits for. So when he asked me to build this other little building, it's just a little 30 by 40 storage building. Doesn't have water, doesn't have sewer, has electric. And so based on the way the other three buildings went, I thought he had a permit. But he thought I was going to get a permit. So the only rea, we weren't trying to sneak something in. It was, it was a mistake, but it was an honest mistake. That it got built without a permit.
Did you realize you were in the the easement for the detention pond?
That part, I knew, I knew it was close to the detention pond, but there again, because I didn't do the engineering, I didn't, I never saw the-
Mr. Patton said that you took some precaution because it was so close to the detention-
Yeah, well, because it's close, we, we knew we were operating close to an existing detention pond, so-
So what'd you do?
What we're, what we mean by that is we didn't tear up the detention pond in the process of building. We stayed out-
You didn't build it taller, you didn't build it off the ground or anything like that?
It's four feet up. The pad, the pad that was pre-existing is already like about four feet higher than the water surface of the pond. It was that way existing.
Higher, four feet higher than what?
Than the water surface of the pond. It's, there's no way that building can flood. And that's why Ms. Katie in the engineering department, she was in favor of the variance because of the elevation difference. The floor of the building being four feet higher than the water could ever be in the pond. Because the pond bank would always flow before it gets that high. Anyway, the the, I mean, we're, it's, it's unfortunate the building got built without a permit, but it's not like we were just trying to cowboy something in there. We, it was a miscommunication. I should have asked. I take the blame for that. But fact of the matter was, the building got built without a permit. The engineering that was done beforehand, that engineering company never filed the drainage easement. And that issue came up. And that's how we figured out that there was a conflict because I said, "Since I'm an engineer, I'll just do that for you." And then that's when we figured out that it was in the easement. So it was all just, it was just some unfortunate events, but anyway, we are where we are. Yeah, the, the concrete was already there. There was a, there's about a 30-inch wide strip of concrete that we poured to fill in in the middle because there was two slabs with a gap in the middle, which would have been a dirt gap in the center of the building. So we filled that part in. It was nowhere near the pond. That part that we filled in is nowhere near being in the easement or anything. But we filled it in so the building would have a floor. So I don't know if I muddied the water or cleared it up, but that's where we are. Then the, the fire department was in favor of the easement and of the variance and the engineering department was in favor of the variance. I think it just-
So the variance asked for what? The, the ability to build what?
No, so the variance specifically was, the ordinance requires the perimeter of a detention pond requires a 20-foot wide access easement all the way around that perimeter.
Okay.
So this variance was to reduce the 20-foot to 11, I think, or however it's written up. In one little section. The rest of it all still has the 20. There's a very small, like a 30-foot section of length where we're going to reduce it. Just to keep the building outside of a, of the easement. There's still perfectly good access to the drainage pond if it needs to be cleaned out. Nobody had any issue with any of that. I think it was some confusion. Anyway, we are where we are. If y'all got any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
So the building in question is this square on the top part of the retention pond?
It's in the northwest corner, up in the skinny part of the pond.
And is that like a, I'm looking at Google Maps right now. Is that like a temporary building or what it?
Well, it's supposed to be just a 30-foot by 40-foot storage building.
Really, nothing more than that could be built there, right?
No, well, I mean, technically you could do whatever you want, but for the functionality of it, it's just an accessory storage building to complement the ones that are already there.
Is it pretty much taken up, is that a 30 by 40 slab?
The slab is a little bigger than 30 by 40, but-
Close.
Yeah. I think the slab extended out about three foot on one side and about two foot on another side.
More questions, council?
Yeah, I have another question. So you said the variance requests a reduction in that easement or whatever you call it?
In the 20-foot width.
Yeah, from 20 to 11.
Or nine, I don't remember exactly.
Whatever, it's nine or 11. But for how, for just for 30 feet?
For the 40-foot length of the building.
Not all the way around the pond?
For the 40-foot length of the building.
And is that described just for that little area somehow? You have a legal description that does that or?
I don't have a legal description now.
How are you describing it?
I'm sorry?
How are you describing the variance?
Well, it'll be a meets and bounds description and pending the results of this appeal, we'll either describe it with that narrowed section or not.
And how would we do that, Ernest, if we don't already have it described? How would we do a variance if we don't already have it described?
Normally, variance requests are granted via a letter after they're granted by the planning commission. Pat's even referred me from Roma. Normally, they just tell them what the specifics of the variance are. It's not a, we don't pass an ordinance or-
What I'm wanting to-
The last section have a drawing, so if you want that-
Yeah, what I'm wanting to make sure though is if we were to grant this, it wouldn't be more than the 40 feet he's talking about.
Right, yeah, we don't even want more than that.
I trust you, sir, but I'm, I just want to make sure. So how would we do that?
Could it just, could it not just be for the length of the existing pad?
This shows that the easement narrows to nine feet, two inches across the length of the building is what this drawing shows.
Yeah.
Which is 40 feet.
So 40-foot variance.
Yeah, 40-foot in one direction and 10-ish feet in the other direction.
10 feet, yeah, 10 feet, 10 inches, yeah. variance.
Along 40 feet.
But if we don't have the filed easement, the easement document could just reflect, that's the boundary of the easement and it's not really a variance. It's just and I don't know, Ben, did you find a? Ben? Did you find the filed easement?
No, it hasn't been filed.
Well, my, my question is, this, this is only encroaching, this is not encroaching upon the drainage structure itself. It's only encroaching upon the access to it.
Right.
Which I think is an important distinction.
Right.
That could be quantified.
I mean, the access easement could just be reduced where that building is and that be not part of the access easement and he'd be required to file the access easement with that section taken out of it and then it's not a variance. It's just a reduction of the access easement as long as you guys will let him be reduced from the 20 that's normally required where this is around that access.
If this, if this had been a filed easement and they were asking to encroach upon the, the boundaries of the filed easement, it wouldn't have been as a variance. It would have been a request to vacate that portion of the easement.
So it sure seems to me like that because the building was built without a permit and put up without any consideration for this issue, that the planning commission probably rightfully did what they did.
Yeah.
So, so it's kind of like now that, that Mr. Patton has taken the building down, it's kind of like we're looking at it, we should look at it like you're coming at it starting all over.
Yeah.
Because the building's not there anymore. And if we were starting all over and you were, we were just looking at that pad and he was coming in saying, "Hey, I'd like to build a building here. Can I get a variance to do that?" I don't see that we probably, or I don't even think the planning commission would have, I, I think the planning commission probably was not very happy with the building was built.
I think Dale wants to make a comment.
Dale Tyler, planning commission. That's, that's the reason. We're when people come in and ask for forgiveness for not doing according to what they're supposed to be doing, the guidelines of the city, then the chances are they will be voted down by the planning commission. It had nothing to do with the actual-
Right, and if you, and if we were starting all over or starting from scratch without a building there, it doesn't seem like it's that big of a-
It probably would have been different had that building not been there.
Yeah. So I'd kind of like to go ahead and allow Mr. Patton to do this. I just want to make sure, I know-
It's properly documented.
Yeah. So I'm counting on you, Ernest, to tell me how to do that.
Yeah, you need to-
I, I have a suggestion.
Make a motion however, Ernest says to do this.
Okay, can I have, I, I suggest that he be asked to submit a revised large-scale development plan for this project that shows that location of that building on there where he's going to put it and an easement document that takes that building portion out of that easement and we move it forward that direction. And that way we have a documentation of what's going on.
Okay, so what action does the council, specifically does the council need to take?
Well, I, I think basically it's allowing the easement to be reduced from the standard 20 feet to whatever he's going to propose in that area. If the planning commission is given, and I'm practicing law without a license, if the planning commission is given the direction that the, the council sees that that's okay to do that, we can move forward with it at the staff level and it doesn't have to go back to planning commission. If you guys are okay with us doing it with a revised large scale, with a revised legal document that sets out what the new easement is and we get that looked at, approved, engineering looks at it, they're good with it. The building, we know what it's going to look like and where it's going to be and we get that filed and this thing's all cleared up.
So Mr. Ritchie, is that very burdensome procedure that she just suggested? Or can you suggest something simpler? Or can you, can you live with what she just said?
She suggested we start all over.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that, I mean, the, the worst thing about it is the time issue, but I mean, we took the building down because
Well, you did the right thing and that's why, at least that's why I'm appreciative.
And what, it's not like, I think it was presented that we were trying to illegally put this building up and got caught and that's absolutely not true. We told, effectively told on ourselves because we called the inspector to come inspect a building that way.
I don't think anybody down here thinks I'm a liar.
So if you can tell us a easy way to, to make her happy, that's what we're looking for.
No, I'm not, I don't want to speak for Ms. Patton.
We're not, we're not trying to make me happy. We're trying to document something that's going on. A simple drawing that revises that large scale that says, "This is the size of the building, it's going to go on this slab at this location and the easement around the top of the drainage easement is this," should take care of it.
That essentially exists. I mean, you guys have it in your head.
Well, I don't have the document, the revised easement document.
Yeah.
If you can prepare the revised easement document and make sure the building is the size it says it's going to be on there, then we should be fine.
And then you're good at staff level? That's something y'all, we can handle at staff level? Doesn't have to start, go back to the planning commission and through the process?
If you guys are good with that, we'll make it work that way.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't know if that takes a motion or not. It does?
I think that was your motion.
The motion is to send it back through.
No, it would be the how Pat's used to it, revised large scale.
To allow the revised large-scale procedure.
Enumerating the location vis a vis the remainder of the access.
That's my motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion of second.
And you won't need the appeal because I've already said you can do what you wanted to do. You just got to document what's in there.
And I mean, I'm okay with that because the drawing essentially exists already. And the only reason I've not written up the easement description is because I didn't know what the easement was going to be.
Right.
You know, I didn't know if it was going to be the variance accepted or the variance denied.
Right.
So there wasn't any point in me drawing it up both ways.
Right.
Just to see which way it was going to go.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I want to just make sure that when we change the easement boundary lines, that it's not for anything else except for that one pad.
It'll be for a long one pad.
It's not all the way down the west side of it or anything like that.
Okay. And staff will make sure of that when it, yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Fugirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks.
All right, I'm going to turn item ten over to our finance committee chairman, Jeff. The upscale.
Well, I can't find it. All right, the finance had one item having to do with the spending of funds from the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act for the upscale NWA and this is for the Northwest Arkansas Community College. I'll let somebody speak on this, who knows more about it than I do, but anyway, the resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval and I'll read the title to the resolution. A resolution to authorize a sub-award to upscale NWA and Northwest Arkansas Community College from the City of Springdale's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds to help fund a job training and workforce development program. Thank you, Cody, I wasn't doing a very good job.
It's just as he said, it's, it's the resolution for the, the award to NWA and upscale for the other portion of the, the overall programming and expansion, capital expansion project.
May the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, any other comments or questions? Thank you all for being here tonight. Yeah, before we vote, but you learned, you got to, we put you last, so you got to hear about variances and, yeah, good. All right, any other comments? If there are no other comments or questions, I'll ask for the vote.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you all. Any comments from our council members?
Mayor, I.
I thought you might have one.
I'll, I'll, I'll go after if anyone else has any comments.
Any comments from council or anything else?
Well, I, I'm going to have comment following him.
Okay, okay. Jeff wants the last word.
At least a question.
If it, if it's okay, can I take your, your stand up here, mayor? Your podium?
Sure.
I got this, y'all hear me? All right. This is, this is Mike Lawson's favorite time when he gets to hear me talk. So, is it on?
Do you want to go up there?
I don't know, let's see.
I turned mine off just to make sure.
Do you want to go up there?
I heard it, I just heard it, right? I know Mike heard it. Well, as y'all know, the best-looking council member is leaving, so. I think it's undisputed. Now, as y'all know by now, I, I will be departing the council at the end of this month for what I consider a life, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, which, Jeff, this may prevent your, your question, but I can't discuss it yet. But I'll be happy to share this opportunity as soon as I'm able to. But with this being my last in-person council meeting, I, I wanted to address my colleagues, the people in this room and the residents of this wonderful city of ours. I'll be attending the next committee meeting in person, but almost certainly I'll be somewhere in the Appalachian Mountains on my way to Washington DC, zooming in for the council meeting at the end of the month. But I really wanted to just stress how, how much of a privilege this has been and how serving the residents of our city alongside y'all has truly been an honor. Through our discussions, our debates and our occasional dogfights, I, I think we have steered the ship of this city towards more prosperous waters and I'm confident that that can continue and that that will continue. And that we can make what we, this place that we call home, a better place for all, all of our residents. Personally, I not only hope, I not only hope that I made our city a, a better place, but I also hope that I have set a standard for the next generation of leaders in our city and that that continues. But in departing, I ask a couple of things from my council members and, and the mayor and, you know, the, the first being that we continue to embrace what I consider to be the biggest asset of our city and that's our diversity, our diversity in economy. As, as we all saw, our economy prevailed and led the pack during the, the toughest times of pandemic and that was because we not only rely on one industry, we are the best set economy as far as diversity goes in Northwest Arkansas. And I hope we continue to embrace that, foster that and, and really just be the place for investment in Northwest Arkansas. Also the, the diversity of experience and thought, I've said this before, but I grew up in a different Springdale than at least half of y'all and not for better or worse, it was just different. And I think bringing our differences and experiences to the table and really working with each other as we have has, has really led to wonderful outcomes for our residents, such is what we just invested in. This wouldn't have been possible two decades ago, but I think we fostered a place that really allowed someone to even consider this. And lastly, the diversity of our people, people from all over the world who come here, work hard, bring their cultures and heritages and, and this entrepreneurial spirit of wanting to make this place their home and, and wanting to make this a safe place for their families. I also ask that we continue to support our law enforcement and first responders. I, I'm, I'm fairly confident that that won't be a problem, but I just wanted to note the importance of that and that we've all seen it in the past few years, the importance of that. But also, I guess lastly, my ask of y'all is to plan for the future as we have been and continue doing so. Because as we've seen in the past twenty years, we've gone from roughly forty-five thousand people in two thousand to I'd say ninety thousand now. So we're well on track to hitting a hundred thousand soon. And what we lay down right now as far as ordinances and resolutions, infrastructure, my opinion, and this has been my approach, is it, it might as well accommodate to the, the hundred thousand that we'll have soon and not the eighty-seven thousand or so, we're, we're undercounted, but the eighty-seven thousand or so that we have now. And I'd be remiss if I, you know, I, I, I've never shied away from this, but I've also never worn it on my sleeve. If I didn't mention how this poor immigrant kid that came to this country, whose family came here with nothing, has been able to sit here with y'all as an elected official of my hometown, this town that I came to when I was six years old and, you know, laid roots in and just developed thousands of friendships in and have had multiple and endless experiences in. You know, this is what I call home, regardless of where I go next and regardless of where that takes me, this is home. And on a broader sense, my story of coming here as this immigrant and going through our public school systems and sitting here with y'all now is not the exception in this country, it's really the possibility for us all. And I, you know, just want to stress that with y'all. So that has really dictated my approach to serving. And this is what I view this as, it's a duty, it's a responsibility, but at the end of the day, it's been service, service to our residents and, and again, making this place a better place for all. And that's brought a lot of weight on my shoulders, but, you know, I've embraced that. I think what I've brought to the table has been a different perspective and y'all have embraced that, I thank you. And we may not, we not, we, we did not always agree and that was certainly fine because again, the outcome was better at the end of the day. So I conclude this by saying, thank y'all, thank you to my colleagues on the council, thank you to Mayor Sprouse for your, your friendship and your leadership and for your willingness to take time to, to speak to me and, and really hash out some details here and there. Thank you to our city employees and our department heads because y'all are the ones that keep this city functioning properly and, and you go underappreciated. And most of all, thank you to the residents of Springdale, Arkansas, this place I call home. I'm going to Washington DC with Springdale in mind and I guess I can say I'll be back at some time, at some point, I don't know when. But lastly, just thank y'all for entrusting me to lead, I appreciate it.
All right, well, I'll say something at the end, go ahead, Jeff.
I was just going to congratulate Kevin on accepting the opportunity that's been placed in front of him and good luck and, and appreciate your service to the city, have enjoyed serving with you. His announcement came out last week and I was hopeful that we'd have some conversation on the procedure tonight. I, I spoke to Ernest earlier and I, I guess I was hopeful that there might be some way of dealing with this vacancy in November election. But I think from the comments that I got from Ernest, that sounds like it'd be almost impossible.
Did you want me to, given the timing of the vacancy, that is correct? So the statute would charge you to take action at the first regular meeting after the vacancy, which would be September the thirteenth and the statute charges you to either call for a special election or appoint someone who lives in Ward Two. I will tell you my conversations with the election commission that the earliest that the special election could be would be February of next year.
So, so really we won't even be dealing with this issue until September thirteenth then, is that what you're saying?
That the statute charges you to.
Do something on that day.
At the first meeting following the vacancy, which is the end of the month, so that's the first meeting.
I've got a question. I've got a question about that. They have to discuss their plan the first meeting after, the first regular meeting after, regular council meeting after Kevin's resignation is effective. So do the, but if they decide, it's, it sounds like a, it sounds like an election is going to be difficult unless we, unless the council decides to wait until February and do a special election. If, if the appointment is the way to go, do they have to actually appoint? Or do they just have to state that that is their plan? Because the reason I ask is because I didn't know if the council may want to entertain resumes from eligible people that live in that, in, in that ward before they appoint.
I think you do it either way, I know the last vacancy we had, which ended up in a former council member being appointed, I, I believe that was how the council chose to proceed, you could do either one, you could either make the decision on the thirteenth or state how you're going to go about making the decision.
So if, if an appointment, something I, I would just suggest you all think about and consider is, is if an appointment ends up being, being the direction you go, I think it, it would be good to consider the possibility of taking, opening it up at least for resumes and hearing from residents.
There's no requirement on how, how quick you have to have an appointment made?
Well, the statute just says that the first regular meeting following the vacancy, the council shall either appoint or call for a special election, but I do believe it gives you the flexibility, which we did, I think it was Colby's seat when Jim Reed was voided.
I don't know, did we take resumes? Okay, good, good, okay.
That's right, I forgot, yeah.
We couldn't just leave it open forever in other words.
Well, I don't know that you could do that, but I, I think you've got to make the decision one way or the other.
One or the other at some reasonable.
You, you could even name, if you decided to take resumes, you could put a deadline on it and say, we will appoint by this time.
If it's, if it's over two years, doesn't it have to be an election though?
No.
No, it doesn't.
The stat. The, the statute says if the portion of the term left is over a year, then it can be filled by either appointment or election, if it's less than a year, then it's only by appointment. Mark Hugh, I have a question.
I thought I heard it.
No, it's one.
So any, obviously we'll discuss this more over the next few weeks.
So my, I'm hesitant to speak because I have no say-so in that, rightfully so in the process, but my lawyer brain is, is wondering, and this is a sincere question, if you guys opt to appoint someone, is there any looking back on that as far as can, can the council change their mind? Or is that solidified at that first Tuesday of September? Since there's, since there's so much time between September and February.
I think if, if the council appoints, it's for the remainder of the term.
It's for the remainder of the term, correct, to the end, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So there'd have to be a recall or something.
And are they able to run again?
Yes.
And they would be able to run again, yes.
Yes.
Would they be able to put council person on their ballot?
I believe they would, yes.
I believe they would.
They would, yes.
But that, that, that at least gets you some good information to mull over for the next week or two. So, anything else?
No, I, and I don't, I'm not hesitant to say that I would, I'm more for the, the process of appointment because of the issues involved in, in the wait. And I think, you know, the sooner we can get the word out and start getting applications in, I think the, the more important that'll be. We want to have, you know, as many as possible that are, are wanting to do that.
I think getting the word out is going to be important, we've got, we've got one, you know, one, one position in that ward up, that will be up in November anyway and as far as I know, it's not generated any opposition yet. So, so there are a lot of, I, I know there are people in that ward who would do great and who need to serve, but maybe they just need to know that, that we're looking. And, and so, I, I think, I think getting the word out is going to be important to get a good, a, a good representation to, to choose from. Okay, Ernest, what else you got?
I, I have one thing that's completely one-eighty from what we've been talking about and this is totally self-serving, but I'm going to do it anyway. Next Monday, August fifteenth, will be my parents, Ernest and Lyndicate's sixtieth wedding anniversary, which my understanding is that's the diamond anniversary, they're going to be out of town on Monday, but I wanted to publicly congratulate them on their sixtieth wedding anniversary and tell them I love them very much.
Well.
That is awesome.
That's great, well, I had a lot of things to say, but I'm not going to follow that, so.
I do have one other question.
Go ahead.
Special election and does anybody know what the cost of a special election is? I, I think we talked about that last time and, and you're, when we appointed Jim Reed, I think it was around fifteen thousand for a special election, am I wrong on that?
I don't know, I can certainly find out.
Election commission could give us an idea, it depends on how many.
I think that's about what it was.
Yeah. I even asked Ernest to check and see if there was a possibility of appointing until, see, the legislature just laid out four, just a couple of years ago, just laid out four dates a year that you can have special elections and the next date, since we can't do the November, doesn't look like, the next date would be February, as Ernest said. I even asked if there was a possibility of appointing until November or until May or, you know, to do a special election and Ernest said the statute doesn't read that way, if you appoint, it's for the remainder of the term, so. Okay, all right, any other comments on that? All right, good deal, well, I don't have anything else, so we'll see y'all Monday night for committee. Congratulations again, Kevin, we look forward, Springdale's proud of you, I know you'll continue to make us proud and I know people will look forward to hearing what it is exactly you're going to be doing. All right, thank you.